of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, please turn your cell phones to silent. Are there any additions or additions to that?
I'm sure there are not.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, opposed, passes. Like visitor comments.
Do you want to say something? Even just a hello?
No?
Alright.
Well, thanks for coming.
Moving on to the consent agenda, consider the minutes of the monthly previous board meeting. Monthly cash flow, including investments, monthly bills paid, and monthly bills paid in activities accounts, personnel summary sheet, and donations, one of which from Bright Funds, for, um, for the elementary, and one from the Pillager Booster Club for a football request, and the Huddle sponsorship for the year. So fifty-two hundred dollars for them. So thank both Bright Works, Bright Funds, and the Pillager Booster Club. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, opposed, passes. Special report reports with possible action. We're starting tonight with personnel. Listening to me talk a whole bunch great at the beginning. We met on June third, or June fifth, last Thursday. Uh, we started off the meeting by talking about our support staff person of the year, Mr. Doug Johnson, and how great an employee he has been for us. So thank you, congratulations to him. Then we reviewed the final budget reduction sheet, which Budget Committee will go over, I'm guessing. So we just.
Reviewed it.
Reviewed it. Then we looked at the review of the 2025-2027 contract changes and salary schedules with Pillager Ed Minnesota, which is an action item on our agenda. So I would make a motion to ratify the 2025 through 2027 contract with Ed Minnesota. Nineteen oh one. Can I get a second comment?
I will second.
Any questions or comments? I believe you all had it in your packet. There were some bigger changes that we did that, um, like six changes that were quite important to our contract versus changing. I guess the biggest one would be the MOU that we signed with them on, um, the insurance options that we're offering, um, the, because of the way the contract is written and the contract we take, but we are only offering two insurance plans instead of the four, I believe. And there were some other things.
We're going to try to offer the four.
Try and offer the four, yes.
Depending on how it goes for the bid.
Yes.
And that's what the MOU states. The Insurance Committee will review the bids and see if it helps us or hurts us.
Yes.
Because Brainerd does offer four and they're self-insured, which is easier for them.
Yes.
So we follow the language, but we have an MOU that states, we'll look at it as an insurance committee, and if it doesn't help us or benefit us, we won't follow it. That's basically what the MOU says.
Is there any other questions or comments or concerns on the?
You said there were big changes, is that the only big change that you're considering a big change?
There was some, a lot of it is, um,
Just language?
District, yeah.
Okay.
Language, dollar amounts.
Yeah, dollar amounts, language. I think the biggest one was insurance, but that was, like I said, we did the MOU with that.
Sure.
The other one, I think that would be an addition that we should mention, that special ed teachers get two process days that they can get subs, so to do paperwork and stuff.
Oh, okay.
So they can get subs for two days, and they have to come into work, they have to do it here. There's some things that they have to follow, but that's new in the contract, so it helps special ed teachers with paperwork and stuff, so that's an added.
So it's an added cost, but it makes sense.
Right. They max, they put a max on a retirement payout, um, which we don't think we've ever hit anyway, but we have it not in there. Otherwise, the most branded changes in the whole thing is under the insurance, which ours is under the MOU.
Okay, okay.
The other thing I would mention too is the teacher lane changes. They used to be able to do it twice a year. Now they can only do it once a year, which is a benefit to us, so it helps us with budgeting and stuff.
Yeah, for sure.
So we know they have to do it by September first, so if they take classes throughout the school year, they can't get it a lane change till the following year. So, uh, that's a, that's a change which helps us with budgeting.
Yeah, because not like when they're down making.
Right, right. Yeah, it used to be twice a year. That's why there was a big, when we did the first and second revisions, a lot of times we'd have a forty, fifty thousand dollar lane change in there because we had teachers going back. We've had so many going back lately that, that that's a big line item for us in our budget, which I'll, you know, share it with the budget.
I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah. It's a benefit to us, you know, and actually it's a district.
I think the only other things, like the ECFP and school readiness teachers, according to the Brainerd contract, they put them in as under their contract. We always had them under our contract, so it's now in the writing, but we did it anyway. So that was a large change. Um, whether you're substituting for calling this price difference or what you got paid for. I think the only other thing that was large, I would say then, would be the vocational certified personnel.
Yeah.
That we put in. Brainerd's always had it, we never had to, but like, um, small length in class. Because they're not certified teachers, we have them in under something else. Brainerd's had that for a long time, we just haven't.
I was wondering about that.
We never did that.
They're not typically, they don't have the pedigree as a teacher, so they fall under a different tier.
Right.
So there's different things that they can get lane changes, and it's, it's language for them, basically.
Okay.
Yeah. We have two Chad Cool.
I didn't know that could read it all.
Yeah, Chad Cool and Paul Loscoziak are tier one teachers. That's two on, right?
Yep. But other than that, it was all basically numbers for updated numbers and updated language.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, opposed, passes. Uh, then, um, but we talked about Mike's evaluation of district employees. He's in bits with that right now. And that was pretty much the end of our meeting. So did I miss anything, Mr. Burden?
Nope. No, pretty much it right on the.
Alright. Then we can move on to curriculum. Alright, yeah. Got a whole piece of paper.
Always, right?
That's okay, that's fine.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so just a couple of updates. We do, the twenty-third, we'll meet as a committee, we'll go more through district goals and better through the data than we did with the DLT. So summer school update, uh, we have about seventy-six students enrolled in summer camp. Summer camp enrollment, registration, and then summer, uh, school and registration is definitely down from the third base here, it's a lot happier than the students that we have. I think we're going to agree that to the bus transportation piece. Um, this will, our program, because of, uh, the adjustments we've made for next year, will go back to just a very traditional summer school program that we'll offer, like we have in the past. And then camps will be offered through community, that will be kind of spread out. Um, summer technology updates. We are updating all the smart boards across the entire district. Uh, we have new, new smart boards coming in that are made by Newline. Newline is American-made product. It is a product that they will fix. Uh, in terms of if it breaks, we can take it, send it, they will fix it, they'll send us a temporary one. With the smart boards we have currently right now, we get a lot of, well, it's four years old, five years old. It's just dead.
They have a lifetime guarantee on their product?
No, it's for five years.
Okay.
So it's a five-year, five-year deal.
Wow, that is a long life.
But it is, it is for tax. But within that five years, it's component-driven, so if a component breaks or burns out, they will replace that component. Where other products, it's just done, the life of it's just over.
That's right.
So it's really a great.
And we're actually leasing those.
And we're actually leasing those for five years.
Oh.
Which, which we can budget every year for that.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, if you got to replace ninety smart boards, that's a two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-dollar hit, and it's like, where are you going to come up with that money?
It creates some stability.
Yeah. So we have a set number every year to leasing, and they'll replace some.
Yes.
At the end of five years.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So easier budget number.
Yeah.
So we will be preparing for training teachers on that. Nice thing, it's a Google login, similar to all the Chromebooks on our computers, so it actually, I think, will be much improved system from the smart board system that we currently have. We're updating all the phone systems in the district as well, and then we collected all our Chromebooks and we're preparing for our updates. Lot going on in tech. Uh, district leadership team, we met on May nineteenth. Um, did some updates, we went through, discussed a little bit of district data, we'll do more of that at the Curriculum Committee. Uh, talked about accelerated math and looking at, starting that with fifth grade, moving from an honors piece to an accelerated piece. Um, college and schools, cellphone policy, and then we ended with talking, a continued conversation around career programming. Uh, number four is Minnesota multi-tiered system of support, so Minnesota MTSS. We are the admin team, uh, with teachers, um, on that committee as well, school psychologists, um, are looking at our MTSS model and programming. So it's a examination of all of our systems that support students. And so MDE offers this training, there are a hundred and thirty schools, schools or school districts in it right now. Uh, we just started it today. And we are going through that process of looking at our systems and saying, how do we support our students? Where are the things that we're missing, where are the things we're falling down? And you were from tier-one instructors in the classroom to our intervention program. It leads to the identification process for special education. It really is designing a system that is preventative. We want to support and help students before we have that need to go to special education. And so we're just starting that process, it's a multi-year process of looking at that. Um, the special education identification process is going to change in the next five to six years, um, which this model is needed for that process. Um, number five is VPK update, I talked about that last time, we did accept VPK for this year. We haven't heard anything about next year just yet. But refunds, just to give you an update, refunds are being processed, they go out later this month. Anybody that, that paid in after January first.
At this point, I would encourage everybody to not pay the whole thing until.
Right, honestly, right now. Hopefully we'll hear in the next month or so whether we, we've got VPK moving forward.
Has anybody, oh, sorry.
I would just say, Ryan, we got to make sure we mentioned that to Betty and Josh when we said, you know, that not, not to pay the whole year, just.
Right, encouragement just suits, so go to what kind of a hole, right?
Because there's always been a discount in the past.
Their house for paying upfront, like a ten percent discount.
Have you heard any feedback or your kickback at all?
They haven't anybody yet, but letters will go out with the refund, but that's most likely we won't hear any additional feedback. We haven't also advertised it moving forward because we don't have word of whether or not we have it for next year. So Josh and I have been talking about that quite a bit. Um, and the last one, just the CIS update, um, so we have a number of courses through Alexandria Tech. Uh, our teachers are working at, um, both working with their cooperating teacher or professor at the ATCC. And so they are preparing for those courses that will offer CIS courses here, um, as well as their online high school program as well. So we are, we are moving forward, we still have a, a number of students that will take CLC credits, and it will be a hybrid year for probably this year and even part of next year, but students coming up will, will migrate over to Alexandria Tech.
Any questions for Ryan?
I don't know if they could be in the email right now for Pregal. The summer school one, I noticed that numbers were down too, and I, I attributed it to it had to been a busing problem. Or not problem, just our lack of busing or not mobility too. Is there any chance that we could work with foreign shell bus next year to be like, here's our pickup locations for a fee, you pay this fee? I mean, because it would technically not be us, it would be foreign shell. I mean, I don't know, like, how, how.
Almost like a community transportation.
Basically, so that we could get more kids here. I mean, I know that we're going to already have some budgeting, we're rarely going to cut close, I think, coming up.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know, is that legal? I don't even know if we can do something like that.
Talk to them about it.
I'm sure they can.
They have integrity. I mean, they've been pretty stuffed, you know, strict on what their, their, the dollar is for them to run.
Right.
Um, the other side, keep in mind, we, we cut the twenty grand out to pay teachers an extra two.
Right.
So we also struggle finding people to do summer school, even years ago, without, you know, if they're only making what the targeted service rate is, which is twenty-seven dollars an hour. We barely had enough to do the twenty or thirty kids that would sign up in the old system now.
Qualified.
So even if we got seventy, eighty kids next year and only paid twenty-seven bucks, I don't know if we'd find staff to do this. So it's, there's a couple pieces there, and other than just the transportation, because of the budget cut of the twenty grand, which is what we paid above and beyond what the targeted service rate was.
Sure, sure. So do we cap company students we allow to come to summer school?
No, they just have to qualify for it.
Okay, so we, we have our qualified students and then we just hope.
We invite them to come and say, you're, you're what?
It really is, we sent out a pretty large number of invitations.
They hope that we have the staff.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's a lot of recruitment. You know, my previous history, it was a lot of recruitment to get people to teach summer school. Partly because targeted service funding has not changed in about twenty years.
Oh, if, teachers do a lot during school year too, so you can get it.
Right, right.
Alright.
But always good to brainstorm in terms of ways that we can offer or get people interested in using the service.
And then my second question was, um, if those new TV things are Google enhanced or whatever, how's, what about Google Classroom saves someone? Just throw it out there, just try to find some.
It is an area that I'm working on.
Okay.
It's an area I'm working on. There are a number of things within school G that, that school G does above and beyond Google Classroom.
Okay.
We looked at those too when we did school.
Right. And I started looking at them this spring as well.
Okay.
There, Google has enhanced quite a bit, but it still is lacking a number of features that our teachers use pretty regularly.
Okay.
So it's something though.
It's on your mind at least, okay.
Stays in the house.
Yeah.
A little bit more stable system because they would all integrate together.
Yes.
Any other questions for Ryan?
Thank you very much, sir. Food and policy. Consider this your second reading, folks, we did not have a meeting, but this is our second reading of policy number four thirteen in regards to harassment and violence. Policy four twenty-five, staff development and mentoring. Policy five twelve, school-sponsored student publications and activities. And policy seven oh four, development and maintenance of fixed assets. And all imposed in your board book for reference.
Okay, any questions, Colored?
We do have a meeting scheduled for June sixteenth as well for handbooks and stuff.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on to activities.
Uh, we did not meet, looks like we are meeting June eleventh. But from the looks of it, we need our annual membership renewal, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the MS HSL membership renewal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Very second, awesome. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Posh passes? Anything else for activities?
Um, nope, well, you should be good.
Alright, facilities.
Nope, I do have my meeting with Lakewood, it was postponed last month, so it's coming up. Uh, but meet with, uh, wait for discussion and stuff, so that's, I should have report next board meeting.
Budget.
Budget, we met on June third, and in front of you, I think you all have the packet, the yellows and the tans highlighted. And this is some of the things, the things in tan are the ones that we were trying to make, or that we did make cuts of. And on the bottom middle, in the red, a hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty was our, that's what we are saving, this is what our cuts were. That's our actual cuts, we had initially projected two hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and eighty, but we did not save that amount because we had to add some things back in. The yellow highlighted are things that we added back in, and we were hoping to save some money on speech pathology and social worker, but those contracts didn't work out that way, so we had to add some cost back in. So again, tan are things we cut, yellow are things we added back. Our savings is at a hundred and eighty-one thousand eight eighty is what we ended up cutting and then saved, if you can follow that. Okay, then the second page of that, which we will, I'm going to touch on a couple of these things, but Missy is going to go through our line item for the budget. But you'll see increases and costs to the budget, some of the bigger ones. Teacher lane changes, increased costs, almost a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Well, always health insurance increase, that's forty-two thousand, and that's not even, this is our projected.
Yeah, estimate.
Yeah, estimate, so. Yeah, that's only at eight percent. Uh, the curriculum increase of three hundred and seven thousand, well, that's a reading program, and that's every seventh year that we change that, and that's just an expensive piece of curriculum, so it was time, and that's why that cost is that. Um, licensed school nurse, you probably had emails or reports about that adding another nurse. So there was an increased cost. Some savings to the budget listed there, PSEO, and that is because of changing from CLC to Alec Tech. So that's some savings for our budget of sixty-six thou, just say sixty-seven thousand. Change in revenue, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. And these are going to be some of the things that Missy will go through on the line items. The third page, we about twice a year go through this, the fundraising recap. And it shows the groups on the left, then it talks about what their fundraising goal was on the far right, and the actual numbers raised for their fundraising goal. And it talks about in the middle, what their money is to be used for, and overall, it looks like they did great. Fundraising went well. Okay, I'm going to have Missy want to go through our, let's see, to put a booklet together.
I did put a booklet together, so in board book you have the district line item, so you're all able to see that. Um, but for just an overview, a broad overview, I did do the budget book. Um, so the Budget Committee hasn't seen the, the, uh, budget book either. And I'm going to mention there was a slight change in the revenue, so because legislature hasn't closed yet, um, Mr. Marlberg was at a meeting last week and learned that our compensatory dollars is going to be a whole harmless for next year, so even my reports at MDE aren't updated to this because it hasn't been signed up on yet. But it has been, okay, we've given, been given the, they do it. Um, so we have budgeted, we added, that was another additional a hundred and eleven thousand. So that changes our number quite a bit, so, right, you're going to see that as we go through our budget book. So let's just take a peek here. Um, so of course, the first couple pages, we're just going through the school board, and we had admin listed as the admin team. The highlights of the budget basically is exactly what Becky just went over in that packet. Um, so I just want to touch on the gen ed, like the revenue increase, so it's kind of a combination in the revenue. So they did do a projected two-point-seven percent increase for gen ed revenue, and that's per pupil for next year. And then we also adjusted our APUs, so I've got budgeted one thousand four hundred and fifty kiddos. Now remember, that's a weighted average, that's not the exact number of bussing seats, that's a weighted average. Um, our kiddos seven through twelve weighed higher than our kiddos six through K through six. So that's a weighted average. Uh, then you see the PSEO, budget cuts, then you have the teacher rollups, the transportation, new curriculum, projected health insurance, and then I did do, I added the PFML payroll tax into the budget, so that's only our portion of the PFML, so the legislature is point eight-eight, so we, our share is a point four-four. So that's about a thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand dollar kick to our budget.
Yeah, I did mention that when I did the costs, and I thought, that's the family medical leave that everybody pays point four-four percent out of your check for, and the employer pays point four-four percent. And then we'll see what happens with that new legislation.
I was like, who, who's that going to pay for?
Yeah. So that's the maternity.
I know, but I mean, like, it's just, I don't want to say it doesn't seem like enough because they'll take that and be like, oh, well, yeah, four.
So at the bottom of this page, we have our unassigned fund balance, so actuals, it's the same number from our audit this last fall. So twenty-twenty-three, our fund balance was at eleven point eight percent. Um, projected with my second budget revision was coming in at about seventeen point one-nine percent. Um, with our line item, we are projected to have about a negative one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Um, I would say that that is kind of worst-case scenario. I don't anticipate that we're going to be that far in the negative going into next year. First revision, we'll have a much better picture of what it's going to look like next year.
And with that too, keep in mind, that's, that's what three hundred thousand dollar curriculum costs, which is a high cost every year, we just don't have that. You have two years where you have a high curriculum cost, reading and math. Because everybody has it.
And how far apart are those two?
Back to back, aren't they?
Uh, there are a couple of years apart. I stretched out math a couple of years, so it's not back to back.
Just do math, or we're going to be doing math?
We'll be doing math in a couple of years.
Okay.
And then we talked about, there was only, how much of our budget have we used? Is it eighty percent or so?
Oh, as of right now.
Yeah.
Um, when I checked a couple of weeks ago, we were about eighty percent, but we have, June is a big month because we do all the teacher salary payouts for the whole summer. Uh, we finalize all the transportation contracts for the school year, so there are some big ticket items that are happening in June.
We anticipate, we can consider.
So is the budget cuts two hundred and six or a hundred and eighty-one, or is a hundred and eighty-one not including the twenty-five thousand? And that's how you get two oh six?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Alright, so then we also updated food service, so that's just updating the expenditures and revenues to what we have. Breakfast and lunch are anticipated to be free again for next year. And we are still working on spending down our fund balance, which we've been doing a pretty good job of, so we're not concerned there. Creating Ed, same thing, we just updated expenditures and revenues, nothing too crazy there. Um, we have no building construction fund right now, and we have other funds. So overall revenue for Fund One, we are anticipating about an eighteen point two million budget for revenue. And as you can see, it's about eighty-six percent in state aids, thirteen in local letting, and then one percent in federal aids. And remember, federal aids was a little bit higher the last few years because we had that COVID funding, which we don't have anymore. So that's why that went down. Alright, so for this is broke, our expenditures are broke down two different ways. We have the program expenses and then the object expenses, so it's broke down two different ways because we have that two percent set aside for staff development, that's included in the program expenses. So you have expenses of about eighteen point five here. And then if you look at the chart, you can kind of see how it's broke down with elementary and secondary instruction taking up a big chunk of that, followed by special ed and then other people support. And then the next one is just a little bit different, about eighteen point three, because we took out that two percent of the staff development out of there. So now you can see how much is quoted to salaries and benefits down here, and then we have purchase services and our supplies. So just a little bit different view of how the expenses shake out.
I'll just remind everyone that for, maybe, I don't know if you remember this or I've shared this, that state, the two percent set aside for staff development is required by state statute. So you have to set two percent of your overall budget aside for staff trainings and things like that. And you have a committee that's made up of teachers and stuff, and we approve that, what we do with that two percent.
Well, yeah, we talked about that.
Now, if you ever got into a situation, just FYI, it's kind of curious, but if you ever got into a financial situation where you're statutory operating debt, the committee can waive that two percent and put it back into the kitty. But it comes from that committee of teachers to say, we'll waive the two percent set aside, let's say you're. we'll waive the two percent set aside, let's say you're in the hole in your bo-, in your budget. They can waive that statute, but, you know, obviously you have to be in statutory operating debt to do that. Or negative funding, I guess you could say.
Uh, and then food service budget, so anticipated revenues are just, just around a million. So forty-six percent state aids, fifty-four percent federal aids, so just about fifty-fifty there as far as the revenue coming in. And then expenditures, we're anticipating about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand is what we are showing in our budget. So most of that is purchase services, which is, of course, is our obvious that we contract with. Community service is going to be about four hundred and seventy-one thousand in revenue. So eighty-three percent is coming from local revenues, and then seventeen in state aids. And then expenditures are broke down with salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and that's coming in about four hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that kind of summarizes our line item for next year. But again, like I said, it's called that negative one hundred and thirty-six. I would say that's pretty much worst case scenario. I don't anticipate us being there, but we should come out a little more healthy than that. Like, prepare for the worst, prepare for the best. Any questions on line items for next year?
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion, we need to do a motion for this, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I guess line item budget, do I have saved that one?
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Anything else for budget?
That is it. Anything else for you, Missy?
That has consumed my last one.
Anybody have any questions on budget, any of your committee?
No.
All right, then moving on to other updated enrollment sheets.
And chair board, I, I put the updated sheet of enrollment as of today. So you can see at the top one that we've kind of, kind of kept our eye on a little bit. Kindergarten, we gained a couple more, so we're ninety-two. We have five sections, so they are at eighteen point four, within that range of our recommendation. First grade, we're at ninety-five. We currently have four sections there, they're at twenty-three point seven five. We did not gain anybody there since the last time. Second grade, we're at one oh six. They are at five sections is where we're assuming we're gonna put that teacher that we added back in. They're at twenty-one point five, I'm sorry, twenty-one point two with the five sections, so they're all three within that range currently. And if you look down, uh, the change is from where that class was last year. So for example, ninety-two kindergartners, it says same. Well, that's because we had ninety-two kindergartners last year. So we're right the same as we were last year. First grade, we're at ninety-five, last year we were at ninety-two. So we gained three first graders, basically, from when they were in kindergarten. So that goes down the bottom there. Then you can see, I have your enrollment from what we're currently this year to last, to next year. The high schools gained up twenty-one kids, middle schools up two, and elementary's up thirteen, so we're a total of thirty-six additional students going into next year at this point.
Did Randall call us?
Uh, they have a meeting tonight or June above, maybe. I don't remember.
But we're closed in most of those grades to out.
Kindergarten and first graders are both the only one that we would be able to take.
And the third grade?
Nope.
Falls outside of our recommendation.
So the second grade?
The second grade doesn't, if we, if we put the.
Oh, we are adding that fifth teacher.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, we cut a hundred and eighty thousand, and you're gonna put eighty grand back in, so. And, right, go ahead.
We, we did discuss some of that during the personnel meeting a little bit, um, about a plan if it grows more than it would currently.
Yes.
About the plan that.
My question is, is that, whereas current and all but one oh nine does not include the waiting list, there's the waiting list beyond.
The waiting lists are not in there. They are not in there. And if we lose four kids, we're not taking any of those waiting lists.
But if somebody comes in district.
We have to take them. Right.
So we're watching that.
Yep.
Closely, because right now we're also short a room.
Currently.
Well, we have one, but that's kind of that first grade. You know, if we, if we gain, that's that conversation of we wanna keep where we're gonna put that back. Is it better to be at first grade versus second grade? You know, those are all conversations to have in July or August, but.
I, I understand to be mindful of that. I, I understand all of the, all of the stuff that comes with.
And as we, right.
That is a high number.
But like I've said on the budget personnel, we had a hundred and fifty grand in lane changes this year and a hundred and forty last year. So that's three hundred thousand dollars in lane changes from our staff. So we have a very expensive staff, the middle of the age, they're gonna be around for a long time. That's a three hundred thousand dollar every year, so that's why I presented you, and obviously I work for you guys, you can see. Yep, but that's, I just wanna share, that's why we cut those two elementary staff people because of cost.
So that was one of the things I even wrote down in my notes here, is how do we manage lane changes? I mean, this is kind of like a ban. Well, it's unfortunate though because we have to cut jobs then, so like.
Or you increase classes.
Right, I'm like, but does, do people just not care? Or, I mean, I'm new to this thing, so this is, who doesn't care?
What do you mean?
Like, I mean, like those getting, I understand that you have your families, your personal families, right? We all have our personal families, and if we can make more money for our families, we, we should do so. I mean, because that's our, that's our prerogative. But at the same time, it's a double edged sword in the, in, in what we're doing here because that money now, we only have so much, that money now is taken from this pot and put into your pot. And I guess I just.
You can't manage, like, only five of you can go this year, ten next year. You know, you, no, they can all go this year, and you just have to, there's no managing.
So then that goes back. Because then it boils down to this, issue that Sarah's bringing up.
Like, if you have a masked MS plus sixty, you're gonna have to handle thirty kids.
Yeah.
You got some kids. Went back, you got all your education, now you're gonna have to handle, you don't get nineteen kids, you're gonna have twenty-six kids.
I know, I, yeah.
And it sounds terrible, but obviously.
See, that was part of it, that you got that additional education plan, which is that extra load. And that's why we also increased all of our school classrooms to handle at least thirty. I, I'm not a fan of it either, don't get me wrong.
It's not that I'm not a fan, I'm just trying to come up with a, a creative solution, and it's really got our hands tied, it sounds like.
Well, there's only, there's only so much, you know, money in the kettle.
Right, right.
And when the state gives you two point seven percent, which is ninety percent of your budget, where you're giving the revenue, but your expenses are going up six percent, seven percent.
Right, right, yeah.
We've been able, and, and we're very fortunate, guys, we've been able to, we're, we're up thirty-six kids. That's an additional two hundred and fifty grand.
I'm out of literature for that, yes, seriously.
I mean, if we'd be on the up, if we, if our teachers were going back and getting managed, not just our teachers, all the costs. You know, it's contracts, it's, it's busin' contract, it's Penn Met contracts, it's, you know, they all, they all add up, right? Yeah, but if we, if we were losing thirty kids.
And then we'd really start panicking, okay, yeah.
You'd be sitting here, I'd be coming to you saying, you better have twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty kids in a classroom. Like some districts, it'll be interesting to see.
You get other local districts that will be pushing high, high numbers because they are such a whole.
I will do the, I'll ask this fall what some of those are at because of districts cutting, like Crosby, Little Falls, Brainerd. They would probably love to have twenty-five, twenty-six kids in a classroom. I mean, I came out of a district that had twenty-six kindergartners.
We, we set a precedent a long time ago with having excessively low, and it was nice, we don't budget allow for it, but now that we're getting types.
I know, I know, I understand.
And I'm not saying, and you, but you know what, guys? You might come to me in July and say, let's add back. And, and that's your prerogative, and I, I mean, it might be fine to do that. But at some point, if you keep doing that, you, you're just kicking the can down the road possibly, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't mean you can't.
It's your recommendation.
It's my recommendation, absolutely, and that's my job, you know, my job is to.
I, I, I talk about this every year, and. I did, I think that we all do, a lot of the small class studies and preschooler teachers who do have all the [inaudible] because we have very good teachers too, so it just, it's a [inaudible].
And it's interesting, Sarah and I had a conversation about, I'm sorry.
We'll get policy if that number stays the same.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
And policy may need to say, do we look at that one oh five?
And that's, and that's where my question.
Because you could bring those four kids in, and then, but then we get into the problem of we need another classroom.
Yep.
And we don't have that. So it's.
And what grade do they get to the more higher weighted?
Seventh.
Seventh, it's one point two five? Or one point one? One point what?
No, one point two.
One point two.
So it's after seventh grade when that's associated?
Seventh grade, which we bumped up to one-ten. Seven and eighth grade, we bumped that up to one-ten.
And eighth grade's closed already.
And eighth grade is closed.
Seventh grade is two points away.
Okay, well, we can have the policy recommends eighty-five to one-twenty-five.
Yeah, the policy recommends, the policy recommendation is for kindergarten seventeen to twenty-two.
No, but I meant the older grades.
Oh, we did, that's a building.
Building wide, four forty.
There's split buildings, split building, so many wide.
Oh, so you just put the one-ten, one-ten.
Yeah, so we do it as a whole building is what the policy states. You got a little more flexibility in the high school and middle school because you got open classrooms during the day.
We don't cap class.
No, that makes sense, I was just gonna ask what's our, what is our fire marshal camped our building at?
Yeah, it's.
Way high, like, we don't even have to worry about doing anything with that facility.
They take in your space, like your commons, your gym, all that is factored into the fire marshal. It's just not.
Okay, so that number isn't relevant to this number, basically is what you're saying. Okay.
Because when those third through sixth graders, they're all in high school, we're.
Yeah, different conference.
Yeah.
Well, that actually was my next thing, I was gonna count how many years, we've got five years.
You've got a few years, I'm already in there though.
Yeah.
Anything else on the updated open enrollment or open enrollment?
I was, because I did get asked this weekend, and I wanna point out that we are not higher in open enrollment than we are in, uh, in district enrollment. We're actually at like forty-something percent.
Forty-nine percent.
So.
And I got that in my report.
So like, so.
We're like sixty-five percent open enroll.
I got that in my report, I'll share that.
If you took the open enrolled, I graduated of a class size of forty-seven. So if you look at these numbers and you think about the forty-nine percent, things are very similar from a long time ago.
Yes.
When I graduated.
So I can tell you, on, on the road that I grew up on and currently live on, we have five new houses.
Yeah.
I mean, even, so it's, our district is growing, and people need to understand our district is growing.
And I, I got that, I got a little summary of that for you in my report.
I just wanted to point that out since I got asked yesterday at Grand Prairie.
Yeah, I got that thought of.
Uh, then we will move on to your report, sir.
Okay, um, well, right on the, I'll talk about that open enrollment. So we are currently about forty-nine percent open enroll. That, that's equivalent to six hundred and forty-two students. So we have twelve hundred and eighty-five students going into next year. Six hundred and forty-two are open enroll. We lose two hundred and sixteen students to out of district. So even if we didn't have open enrollment, let's say, we're gonna take two hundred and sixteen kids back. So that puts us at about nine hundred kids of our own kids. So yes, we're on the positive side of open enrollment, but I don't think a lot of people realize that we lose kids too. We have two hundred and sixty kids that either open enroll, go online, or homeschool or whatever, that if they said, you can't do any of that, they're coming back to our district. So that puts us at over nine hundred kids roughly. So, um, the big advantages of that open enrollment, that extra revenue allows us, since I've been here, which is the ten years I've been here, we've added robotics, we've added A, video class, small engines, wrestling, additional CIS courses, middle school musical, all those things have been added because of that increased revenue. So if you didn't have that revenue, you're not gonna have those opportunities for our kids. So it really does, you know, help us out because of that extra revenue. Um, so I just wanted to share that, so the numbers for you. Um, one other thing is, a couple of things, Wade and I and a couple secretaries, we are going to reunification training. It's a big fancy word, so what it means is if you had an emergency here, how do you handle the emergency and reunify kids with families? Because you do a lot of training for other things, but in a situation like that, you have mass payouts. And how do you get parents with the right kids, kids to the parents in a situation like that? So we have some, that's put on that source wall by another outside organization. Uh, some of us are going to that. And then I got on, last thing I have, is MSBA sent out a legislative update, which I put on your tables. I just wanna highlight a couple of them, which we already talked about, uh, compensatory money, which we actually got a hundred and eleven thousand dollars back, which we didn't think we were gonna get, which helped us out a lot. Um, extended facility support and bonding flexibility. Um, they passed, for the last, I don't know how many years, larger districts were able to bond LTFM for roofing projects. So we have, remember we have the LTFM levies, which we can take that money to do projects. Larger districts also could, could, they could do that, but they can also lease levy for roofs. Smaller districts couldn't do that. So like the biggest forty schools, for some reason, they think, well, we're a big school, we have a lot of roofs. Well, every roof, every school has a roof, so.
Still kind of budgeting.
Right, MRA, MSBA lobby, if you're gonna let the thirty biggest schools do that, let every school do that. So we could add onto our levy, not only our long-term facilities, we can do some levy for roofs, which in a couple of years, we have the early childhood roof that needs to be redone. Um, in fact, I gotta put thirty grand into that in July because it's got some leaks and stuff in that. So just FYI, when we start conversation about levies and stuff, our board, you guys, could lease levy, I'm not sorry, not lease levy, LTFM levy for some additional roof fixing if you wanted to. So that's new.
But did you not?
Didn't we just fix our roofs?
Yes, but that was in the project. You voted for that.
I did, I did vote for that, you're correct, that part I did.
That was a bond, that was a bond that we went to the people and said, will you pass this to do maintenance and classrooms and stuff? So some of that maintenance came not from LTFM, it came from another levies that we voted for.
Right, I guess my question was, I thought, I, I guess I didn't realize what exactly we were fixing when I voted.
We fixed a bunch of things.
It wasn't all the roofs.
Right, we fixed a lot of things.
But the ones that we did not fix, you are so good at budgeting that you have budgeted for.
Yes.
Yes.
So these lease levies for us right now may not be a possibility, or it should not be a possibility.
Depending what, but you, keep in mind, when you're on the facilities committee, and Wolf comes to you and looks at the things that we have coming up, we have a lot of electrical stuff that's really expensive, we have some roofs, we have, that's something we can just discuss, but there's some electrical stuff that's a big expense, some rooftop units that are some big expense. So it's just something you may not have to do right away, but that might be an option for you.
It unties our hands a little bit, slightly.
It unties your hands and gives you some, if you, if you're running out of LTFM to fix other things, you could do the levy for a roof too. You, so that's new, I wanted to point that out. Uh, another one, school start date flexibility, they allow schools to start before Labor Day. So. I don't know if that's something you guys want me to pursue or to look at. We're in a tough, you know, it's an area here that.
Did you see, like, because what is it not, is it this year? It's like the ninth, isn't it, like super, super late, or is it the following?
I think it's, it was the year that they're gonna do the roundabout because it was, we were gonna try.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something we could, as a board, if you said, you know what? Let's start the last week in August. I mean, it's kind of a touchy situation in our area because of the resorts, they need kids to work. But they did give you flexibility to do that.
And then the work, whether it's the beginning of the summer or the end of the summer, either ends.
Yeah, what's, what's the benefit of it, sort of, start a week?
But then everybody can land, well, come back after tomorrow.
Right, but it's kind of a catch money.
But then, then, then it's like, I'm coming back.
Or do you, or do you, do you give them a spring break?
You could do that, you could, you could add more vacation days throughout the year. There's a lot of things you can do by that. And a lot of kids are already back anyway with sports and programs, they're already here anyway, but, you know. Our calendar's set for the next two years.
Next two years anyway, so we're looking three years now.
We gotta go to an auction, folks.
Last thing I want to touch, they did give us more flexibility in the food service fund. So that was really a restricted, very restricted in what you could buy. They've increased that a little bit, which could be for lunchroom supervision, waste management. So Missy and I will dig into that a little bit, so some more things could come out of there that would help our budget, because you couldn't spend it out of the food service, so. Anyway, so those are a couple of highlights, if you can just read through that and see what some of those things that are supposedly coming down the pipe.
What is common sense inclusion reform? It gives parents right to something.
Inclusion allowed with prior parent, so I think that means they could, you could.
Have a timeout.
Well, I think lunch.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Lunchroom, you, there was a policy that changed a couple of years ago that you could not keep kids away from lunchtime, like recess, and you couldn't give lunch, like recess detention and things like that. I think, I haven't read it yet, but my, what I'm guessing is, Bridget says to the principal, you have my right to have my kid stand to get his homework done at lunchtime.
Instead of missing practice after school.
Yeah, or something. So I think that's with parental consent, they could do that.
But we did that anyway.
We used to, but that changed a couple of years ago. You couldn't suspend kids, what, kindergarten through third grade? I think, you can't suspend kids in kindergarten to third grade anymore. And you can't take away recess. So that's changing a little bit in some of, they went from way in to maybe back.
Well, thankfully, I haven't ever heard that, that must be my kids are doing okay.
That's all I got.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Marlberg? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
The process. What we need, facilities to be, talk about ingredients space, has Walt looked into that?